Welcome to our meeting, excuse my lateness. Before we get started. No, I'll approve the agenda then we'll, this is a public hearing. And it's also online at washingtonstate.org/meetings. I want to entertain a motion to approve the agenda, but I do need to ask. Our attorney, Ryan Patterson, to clarify some of this. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
And I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for the special meeting for January 19th, 2021.
Councilman Bundy, I second the motion.
Making all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, for a point of clarification. Excuse the first half, can we give us a few minutes and then we'll get started. Yeah.
You hear me okay if I leave the mask on or what's your preference? Whatever you're comfortable with.
If you're comfortable taking it off, Brian.
So I, today before the meeting, I was asked to look at city ordinance on our, who appoints the members of the planning commission. So I did that and it seems we have two conflicting, seemingly conflicting provisions, one being in the mayor power provisions in our code 153 that says that the mayor with the advice and consent of the city council, appoints persons to fill city offices or vacancies on commissions or committees of the city. So seemingly commissions would include the planning commission. But if we go to chapter three, which actually governs planning commissions, it indicates the planning commission shall consist of five members and one alternate appointed by the city council. So there's two conflicting provisions, it would seem, but if we look at the fact that the planning commission statute is the more specific one that actually governs planning commissions, my interpretation, my opinion would be it's actually the city council and not the mayor would appoint members of the planning commission. So that was the clarification I was asked to make any questions.
Do we need to update our code to make so one way or the other, just to make it clear?
I, I, yes. I mean, as a matter of statutory interpretation, that's how it would shake out. But, but I would, I would clarify it one way or the other, just so there's not this general specific law, but yes, as it reads now, it says it counts as.
So Mr. Patterson, this Councilman Ivy, would you kind of give us kind of an outline of the procedure? And if there's going to be rounds or how we go about, about this where there's multiple names? I'm just not real familiar with how to do it.
Sure, there, there, there is, the good news for you is there is no procedure. So I believe there are a number of applicants. I think you can familiarize yourself with those applicants by having them come introduce themselves. You can ask them questions, take the matter under advisement, then as a majority council, choose the three you think are best. I think there's three vacancies. That's how, that's how I would proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So I'm, is this item three on our agenda, Mayor? Is this to go discuss the applicant? If we need it? Okay.
No, item three would be if you decide we want to make a decision tonight, we have a closed session. That was not my intent. My intent was to interview the candidates and then individually meet with you and, and then Drew doesn't need a person tomorrow. He's okay for a couple of weeks, so that was my intent, but you're the council, you can do what you'd like to do. What would I like to do?
Help me understand, what was your intent?
My intent was just to have you interview the applicants. Find out for yourself who ones you thought about, and then I would contact you individually and then make a recommendation in two weeks. But you can, however you'd like to, and we'll put that on a workshop about changing that language if you want it changed. As every other mayor in the county, they appoint the planning commission members, but.
Do we need to do that?
I don't really have a dog in that file that council wants to do.
Mayor, do we need to do that by motion? Or can we just agree that tonight we'll just, and then you'll contact us and we'll discuss it, and then you'll make the appointment?
Sure. Or however, if you decide you want to make that decision tonight.
I'm okay with what you suggested. For me.
All right. First applicant, how are you? Sorry, we had to, a matter of procedure, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium, introducing yourself. Either one of those two, you can, well, you can take your mask off. Tell us why you'd like to be on a planning commission, if any of the council members have a question.
Hi, guys. So I'm, my name's Corey Anderson, live here in Washington. And I'm from Southern Utah originally. I've lived here in, in Washington for the last six, seven years, I think, and before that I lived in St. George. My wife and I own Alcoa Custom Homes here in town. And we build, we build custom homes here in Washington County. Sign and build. My, my wife's an architect and I do all the buildings, so she tells me what to do, basically. That's how that works.
Smart man.
I know. Gives me a picture that says, here, it's got to look like this. We, uh, we have, we work with Suba quite a lot. We have a home in the parade of homes every year. Been on the government, the government affairs committee with Suba for the last six years. So that's where I've met a few of you guys from. Also on their safety and education committees, about seven years or so. We have, my wife and I, we have five, five kids here and one of them now lives out of state and has moved on and is married. Have one little grandbaby and one getting ready to go on a mission. One in high school and then two in middle school, so.
You're busy.
Yeah, we're busy.
So the little guy that I met a while back is your grandson? Is that your youngest?
That, that's my youngest.
Your youngest, so you have a brother spread then, okay.
Yep. Yep.
All right, we come over Silver Shadow Drive, is it in the fields?
It's in Wash, it's in High Chaparral, so it's on the bench just above Snobka or, just above Nichols Peak. So right, right near Silver Falls. Everybody calls the whole area Silver Falls, and that's where the entrance and science is.
Would you mind talking a little bit about your education background, that area?
Um, so I'm, like I said, I'm from, from Southern Utah. I, but I went to school, actually started school out of BYU. And it's going to BYU, I was on the wrestling team there, and they dropped the wrestling program halfway through. So I left and went out to New York and went to Cornell and wrestled and finished up my career out there. So I say that because people always want to know how in the world I ended up on the East Coast. Um, I.
What year was that? What? What year was that, that they dropped?
They dropped the program, 99, so. So I went out there, graduated, my degree is in public policy and management. And then I went on and got my master's degree out there as well. And then later got a, a construction management certificate on top of that. My wife and I started building homes. They actually started out because she was the designer and so she was involved in that and, and. We, we started out up in, in Provo and then actually moved back to the East Coast. Wanted to learn how to build on a larger scale. And so we went, went to work for the third largest home builder in the country out there. Built about 200 homes and about 100 multifamily condominiums and so forth for them. Then we went back to doing it ourselves, started Alcoa again. We also owned a subcontracting business. We did framing, roofing, siding, windows, doors, decks. And we did that plus the home building portion. Stayed out there for, for a few years and then sold the subcontracting business and then moved back to Southern Utah, so been here since 2012.
What interests you about being on the planning commission? I mean, besides the exciting meetings?
I mean, this is not where all the funds are. Um, I, I just feel that if, if a person has the ability and the means to, to benefit the community that we should, you know, we should be willing to serve. So I think that with my, with my background, my both work experience and educational experience that, that, uh, that I could be of help to the city and so I think I would, I would offer my services, so.
Well, you're a builder. Oftentimes when we have planning commissioners that are builders and mayors, they have projects within the city. Do you see any potential conflicts of interest?
Um, not any current, I mean, most of the time we build on lots that are already done. So most of the, most of the stuff would be, most of the potential for conflict would be if, for example, I had a subdivision to develop or whatever. Which I do do some of that, but, but on a very small scale, typically just enough to be able to build on. I don't have anything in, in foreseeable future in Washington City with that. But if I, you know, if I were to, then that's something that I would have changed from, make that clear, so.
Am I understanding it right? So right now you mostly be building single, single homes, not doing developments or?
So I have, so right now what I have, mostly what we've been doing is, is single family. We also do remodeling, typical large scale remodeling, like full home remodels, that type of thing. We do have a project in St. George where we're building some multifamily. And we have a project coming up in Hurricane where we are developing some land to, to build on. Like I said, because, because it's just me and my wife, I mean, we're not doing mass developments everywhere. If we do do a development, it's typically that sort of, you know, a full year or two project. Put our effort in that and then build on the houses. But most of what we build is, is single lots that people happen to own themselves typically, or we may buy a couple of lots that are already done.
Any other questions? Thank you, Corey.
I'm sorry, maybe just, I was, thought somebody else was going to ask one, so I was waiting. But maybe just an example of a code or something that you enjoy in another city that you might want to see here?
Code?
I, a rule, a way of handling things?
Um. I mean, I've, I've built a lot of houses here in, in Washington. And actually, all my, all my parade homes that I've built while I've been in Washington. So I've worked quite a bit with the planning department and the building department. And I've seen how different, you know, how, how St. George versus Ivins and Santa Clara and Hurricane and Washington and everywhere. They're all a little bit different. I, I think that would be of, of benefit that I've seen how all the different cities kind of do things. What things tend to work well, what things tend to, to cause snags and so forth. I think Washington has done a really good job actually over the last few years. One of the things that has really helped is moving to the online submissions and so forth, and that's been really helpful. It's been a lot quicker to get, get inspections and so forth and hiring some of these additional ad hoc inspectors have been helpful. If I had to add something, I mean, maybe uh, the ability to have like AMPM inspections, at least on concrete, would be really helpful from a building perspective. Because you have to schedule that stuff, you're on AMPM, so if you can't, you end up with a, a one or a two day lag in your schedule. As a result, or what a lot of people do is they schedule it knowing that there's a 50/50 chance that it will actually pass or not. And you're hoping that it will, until then that turns around and you end up with inspectors, so. If I had to, yeah, say something would be helpful, probably.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Anyone else?
Thanks, Corey. Okay. Pete Bullock.
Hello. I'm Peter Bullock. I've lived here in Washington, I've been here for, been a resident of Washington City for 15 years. Kind of grew up here with my mom being the recorder now. So I was here before the building was here. I own, my home's on Silver Shadow, not Silver Shadow, Brooklyn Street. I have a fabrication, a steel fabrication company out on Washington Dam. We're about, I think we've got about 25,000 square feet under, under building. And four acres, five acres, something like that yard space. So we build big structures, nothing in town, but we do a lot of buildings, big buildings. I think that I see the city growing and I just want to get my input, to help if I can, to move it along. It's going to, we're going to run out of land, we're going to have to go up. And I feel like my area is, I'm necessarily subcontractor, not a general contractor, but we're the bones, we're the structure of the whole city. It's still building something with the people I deal with and the architects and the bigger places, I feel like I could help in those ways. So.
Peter, um, what is, uh, what's your experience as far as land plan?
I have not. So I've done, I've had to go in and deal with the council on conditions, permits and stuff for my business, my other business.
So you've had some experience of being with the council?
Yes.
Going through the process and understanding that?
Yes.
Have you spent much time watching those great planning commission meetings?
I've seen it, you've seen it.
Just good to know that, that you understand the process, so, okay, thank you.
So Peter, Councilman Ivy, thanks for being here tonight. One of the biggest problems, concerns and trying in, in most municipalities in the state and really throughout the country is affordable housing. That's something that we need more of and something that something that we're going to have to take more direction with as a city to bring that about. Would you just share some of your ideas and your commitment to what that would look like for you in considering the future affordable housing market in, in Washington?
I know, I know we need it, I don't know as far as, I believe that the general plan, we'd have to go off of what the general plan says, where it can go. But we have to do something to, to get it in. If we don't, my kids aren't going to live here. They'll, they will move out of this, out of this area because you can't afford a home right now. Most people working, two families or two, two income households can't, can't even afford a house here right now. I know it might be a boom, it might, it might come back down, but there has to be affordable housing because my employees, I have 15 employees and not one of them live in Washington City. They all have to, they're all in the, talking about, they're in the lower areas. I don't know, I believe we need to do something to move that so that we can have affordable housing. Where it would go, I, I don't know, I'd have to see what, as far as what the general plan was and.
You know, it's, you have a really a unique perspective because you're an employer. And you realize that your employers have to be able to afford the housing to keep things rolling. And that's exactly the basis for affordable housing, is to have housing that can be afforded by everyone that, that needs it. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
I just have one question, does Jerry Rome still work for you?
He does.
He was my, I don't know if you realize, he was my neighbor for 30 years, I think.
I'm sorry, I dealt with him every day.
Oh, no, he was a good neighbor.
He is, he's.
He's a good boy. Kind of off topic, but I appreciate that.
I've, I've known him since I was probably like five or six, so.
And Susan's his one?
Yep.
Yep, we're classmates.
Oh, yeah.
Those good people.
Yeah.
So why Pete Bullock? Why should we consider Pete Bullock?
Well, I think I'm, I would, I would say I was an alternate, but I would love to learn this, you know? I, I've grown to love Washington City. I grew up in Hurricane for a little while, but as soon as I left my home, I moved to the fields out in Washington. And then I ended up buying that home, I owned that home until last month when I sold it. I was on the fire department here, I was a volunteer fireman here. I just, I love the city, I wanted to see it grow. And the more I can learn, the more I can help shape the city better.
Mayor, can I just ask one question? So it probably gives you a pretty unique perspective, having grown up in a home where your mother's involved so heavily in public service. Can you just tell us something that you've learned from her that might help you if you're selected to be on the planning commission? What's, what's something that you would take from her that would be in the back of your mind when you have issues come forward as a commissioner?
What's the best interest of the citizens as far as, is it their right? Do they have the right to do this or not? Don't overstep your boundaries. The citizen is our boss, I mean, plain and simple, they're the, they're the people that are most important. They're the ones, they can't get a special handout or anything, but they're still the ones that have to. We're here to serve them, and we need to go above and beyond to serve them. So.
Thank you, Pete, very much.
I was thinking that you still have, you could still get input from her, she knows a lot about things.
I would use that to my advantage if I.
It's always good to have somebody to bounce things off from, helps to make it a service.
Very much so, but I would like to see, help the city grow. I know that we're going to have issues come up as far as, you know, multiple story high rises. St. George has horrible issues with it. I mean, we're doing a job right now and it's, it's not fun because they don't have, they're not used to these big buildings. We did the cancer center, Dixon, we did the cancer center, we helped on the new Dixon building. We don't do very many jobs in town, but when they do, they're multiple stories. They're just, we're growing and still becoming more an issue. It needs to be addressed. Because it'll just go, there's no. For us, there's no regulatory state certification based on advocate. To install, you have to have a certificate, certification, but to build it, you do not. Most cities adopt someone else's plan, certified company like we are. So me going through the steps of having to get my AIC certification, I can work in the United States. It helped me realize, okay, you got to have systems to fall back on to make more, so. If I could help that in the time commission or learn from planning commission to help my, my own business, it would be good for me. So.
Thank you, Pete. That was Michael Green, Mayor, are you here to be interviewed? Come on up. Please state your name and.
June Salisbury.
Oh, that's right, okay.
I've been around a lot of years.
Two or three?
Yeah. So I just applied for this because honestly, I love this city. And if I could help in any way, I would love to. And I've been here 29 years. My husband and I were in construction for 28 of that, and I lost him last year, so, you know. But I have done, I did all the bidding for our company for all those years, so I perfectly understand all the underground and everything that goes into a construction project from the ground up and the underground up. So, uh, I think maybe I might could be of help. It, that would just be up to you guys.
Any questions, Rick? If I could, June, I'm sorry, yes, yes. I was going to say, I, I was sad to hear Red's passing. I knew him fairly well and I was sad to hear that. Now, did you have a little bit of a background in real estate or did I understand or no?
No.
No, the construction and things, I know you worked with your husband a lot on that.
Before that, I worked in accounting, so.
Okay, that's right.
No, no comparison there, but when we started doing construction in St. George, I just started doing, well, St. George, Washington area. I started doing all of the bidding and the books. I do the accounting still. It, yeah.
Got to know a couple of your sons as well now. Do they still run the business or one of them is?
They run their own.
Yeah, they do their own.
Guy runs his own and Phil works for Guy.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, he does. Not affiliated with me anymore, so.
Other than to bring the grandkids over or whatever, right?
Grandkids are number one, you know that.
So I knew your husband also.
Did you?
I'd like to share my condolences. Yeah, I had worked with him a little bit years ago.
He loved this city too. He, he would volunteer for anything, every, and we both volunteered cotton days. He built those wagons that we use so much just to help the city out because he loved the city. And he said, there's going to be a need for this. And I was like, this is crazy. Sure enough, it was a great need. Those wagons go all the time and, you know, from the Christmas tree lighting to cotton days to tours of the city, whatever you guys have going on, we just love to be part of that because we love the city. We came here and, and we said, we looked at all the surrounding cities, deciding where to settle. And we said, this house, this set feels like home, this little hometown feel, this feels like home. And it has been home ever since we moved here, so yeah.
Well, I appreciate that. Let me, the question that I have is, as a planning commission member, what do you believe the most important skill would be to be an effective planning commission member? The most important skill?
Well, I think an important skill on the planning commission would be broad minded so that you could see a point from the contractor and from the city, because somewhere in there you have to meet and be compatible. And, you know, I've been here in the planning, or not, well, planning commission and in the city council many times trying to get different things done and, and I, I realized that it's important that we can reach something that we all agree on. And so being part of planning commission would, to me, would be, would mean that I might be able to help out, give ideas. You know, something that would make everybody happy, so that's. And, and I'm, and I'm assuming the planning commission also kind of plans like what roads we're going to build and a few things in the city, and I would like to see part of that because I, I see some needs on Washington Dam Road. So, you know, there's, I'm pretty smart, I can see where we need to do things and so I'm, I'm open minded there too, but, you know, I, I'd like to help. And now that I've actually wanted to do this for years, I'll tell you that. And Red would always say, you don't have time to do that. And now I don't have Red to tell me I don't have time, I decided I'm going to get in there and just try.
Thank you, June, any additional questions? Thank you so much.
I don't have.
Thank you. Thank you.
I've known June for years and I, and I, you know, I should have looked at, oh, yeah, she's third. I didn't even see that. Yeah, we went around a couple of times. Just, you know, it was just misunderstanding. Yeah. We were at junior college when I went, and we, they were, they, they did really, they won a couple of football national championships. Ball of all. We're not gonna tell you that. Wait, we should be telling when we graduate. You weren't even born. You weren't even born, brother. Seventy-six. Wow. How are you? Good, thank you. Counselor, hey, Turf, you had the Councilman's Day out there. I think he started the passage. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, we were two fifty in our class. We were the largest class.
Come on up. Come on up, introduce yourself to us in the council. Tell us why you wanna serve on our planning commission.
You can take that off if you'd like. You're six feet away from.
And doing, and how we've been doing things within our city. Uh, one of the things, just one of the things concerned me is I look around, as I look at the spooky parts. Development out there. Now, I, I personally would have recommended something different for that area. Residential area, right there in the flight path of the airport, just. Has the potential of opening up the city, the state, the county. Court authorities, not with, to, uh, to possible litigation. I would have recommended that we do something a little bit different. Some of the traffic patterns that are going on around the city. Should take an opportunity to look and see how, what can be done to improve those traffic patterns. Look at, uh, where we put our. Commercial industrial developments, where we put our multi-unit developments. That would benefit. The existing neighborhoods as well as future neighborhoods. And also look at the future of our city. What we can do to increase our tax base through, through encouraging business. That's just some of my thoughts and what I've come to see over the last few years.
Could I ask you, Mr. Swenson, have you, it indicates here that you're an engineer, or have you, are you retired then, or?
I am not retired, and that's another reason why I'm looking for a possible assignment to this. Planning my retirement, I need something to do. I wanna do something that will benefit other people, in this case.
So do you have your own business then, or engineering business, or you?
I have a, uh, a consulting business that I do in engineering. I mainly. Work for the oil refineries around the world. Specify, help them specify process improvements, valves that they would use within that. Units, how to best. Improve their, their output.
So your experience has been kind of primarily mechanical type of engineering? Have you, you talked about traffic a little bit. Have you had any background in that area?
I, I did some work with an engineering company up in Salt Lake area. Just, uh, just a little bit with them. Planning, like the S seventy-eight hundred south, off of Bangor Highway. Redwood Road, some of those intersections.
So, Mr. Swenson, thanks for being here tonight. It's me under this mask right here, there. How many, uh? Do you feel like, how many planning commission meetings have you attended over years? What is your, kind of your thoughts on the process and how? And how you could be a direct benefit to maybe the workings of that?
That's a good question. I have not been able to attend any of those meetings. It was my intent at the beginning of the year of two thousand twenty to do that. Some scheduled conflicts first couple of months. Of course, the situation COVID, I felt that it was best not to.
So we're, we're opening back up our planning commission. It's been closed, sorry, right here. It's hard to tell who's talking, I guess. So, um, so my question is, is there any concern for me on, on the COVID stance of. Going, coming into a council's chamber and, and being with planning commissioners going forward?
Not, not any concern for me.
Any additional questions?
I, I just have a question. So with the planning commission, there are six members, there are five voting members, one alternate that votes if somebody's absent. Obviously, with your background in engineering and life experience, how comfortable would you be if, if you came forward initially in an alternate role? Uh, and, and kind of was able to observe and learn, and then eventually potentially move into, uh, into one of the voting roles?
Yeah, and as I said, my interest is mainly to serve the city.
So, Mr. Swenson, my son-in-law works in that, in the industry that you advise, in the oil industry. And it's interesting work. But as Councilman Staley was talking, I was thinking that engineering is probably beneficial, or run along multiple. Uses, whether it's that type, or, so you have experience in, in like structural or building engineering, or. Kind of some of the basic engineering concepts and that kind of thing?
Uh, yes, sir. As a matter of fact, when we look at, uh, the oil refineries. Each, uh, each particular unit within the refinery. Construction is all structures. You do have to take courses at all, so you do have to look at, uh, the soils and impacts there. You have to determine, um, the strength of the. Materials being used, you have to look at seismic, uh, data. And how that would affect the structures that are being put in there, so. So there's a lot of things that's gonna cross over into civil, civil engineering side.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
Tell us something just that we might not suspect or might not know about. I mean, I've met you as an acquaintance, but. Tell us a few things that, that are interesting about David Swenson.
Some people look at weakness, some, some don't. I tend to be very opinionated. I do tend to fight for what I think is right. So, uh, that doesn't mean that I can't be. I can't have my mind changed, the data puts, is put in front of me. I am very analytical when it comes to that, as you expect. So. I have strong opinions about certain things.
So let me just see if I get this right. You, you're an opinionated and analytical engineer?
Yes, sir.
This might not surprise me. Thank you.
David, thank you so much. I appreciate your interest in applying.
Thank you.
The seats that are open. Van. And Doug Shiel. He's, he's pretty sharp. He's. He's, uh, everything you'd want in a planning commissioner so far, from what I've observed. This, the seats, as we have, we're open, can we just discuss here, open, so, looks like. Jason Smith's seat is open, and it's a three-year. Term, and from where I sent Brian Musso, who's served for about a year. Technically, the seat that he finished out in is open, and that's a three-year term. Monte Holly moved. And his seat has about a year and a half left on it, so that's. Those are the, kind of. Where everything is right now with the commission. I know Kathy has the little paper, but I didn't look close at the others. When the other three. Is it this summer, Mayor?
James isn't a fan done in, in, uh. In, uh. July. Fan. Man, when's he, when's he up? Brian, come on up. It's up to you. This is, this is still America, at least for today. That's right. Brian, just tell us why you'd like to re-up again.
I think over the course of the last fourteen months, um, I've learned quite a bit, you know, being on the planning commission. I think I still have a lot of. Value to the planning commission, you know, my twenty-two years of experience as an appraiser, as an appraiser in the area. I've seen a lot of growth, obviously. Quite frankly, right now, I'm scared for our city and for St. George in the whole, because of the amount of growth that's going on. Type of growth that's going on. We're, we're at the point where we've, we've eliminated the possibility of a lot of people to have homes. Because just within the last six months, the prices have gone up so dramatically that it's, it's gonna be nearly impossible for our kids. To try to get a start at home, unfortunately.
We're getting a hand signal that, that they want you to pull your microphone into your face as much as you can, yeah. There's kind of, yeah.
Okay.
And then they're gonna do it for you.
So, anyway, so I just think, I think the experience I have professionally lends itself to the planning commission, is the biggest issue. That, and that's, I think, the biggest asset that I bring to the table, no matter what. You know, it's just the years and years of experience I've had for doing professionally what I've done. Do I agree with all the things that are going on in the city? No. You know, I have some heartburn with some of the things that are going on. Do I agree fundamentally with individual property rights? You bet I do. And I believe that people should have a, an opportunity to do with their property what they legally can do. So I think that's, that's an important part of being on the planning commission, is allowing people to. To, to access, exercise their freedom and their constitutional rights of, of property ownership. So, that's a long answer to a short question. I'm sorry, Mayor.
Well, I'm gonna follow it up, Brian. Um, so you have some ideas or thoughts about affordable housing? How would we best go about that with our current situation and, and the need for that?
You know, it's hard. It's really difficult. I think that the only way we can do it is, is to almost go away from a free market. And I hate saying that. But, you know, we either have to give tax breaks to, to builders, to somebody or developers to allow them to, to get the land. So it's less expensive. I mean, you can't start with a hundred thousand dollar lot and expect to build an affordable house. You know, the lot prices have to be down in the forty to fifty thousand dollar range. Because if you use just the simple, the simple mathematical formula that most banks use is a 25%. The lot should cost about 25% of what the value of the house should. So when you sit there and look at a hundred or a hundred and sixty thousand dollar lot, I mean, we're in the five to six hundred thousand dollar range. And that's where all the lots are. So we got to bring the lot cost down. I think we need to look at impact fees for smaller lots. I know that's a, you know, I'm, I'm throwing out stuff that's going to get me kicked off the planning commission, in all honesty. It's because, because those things, but those things are the, I mean, like I said, you can't start before you break ground at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and then expect to build a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home. It's, it's physically impossible to do. So, so there's, we need to figure out ways to do that. Do I have the answer to that? I don't at this point. But those are, obviously, I can point out problems, finding solutions is, is a little bit harder.
Would you be in favor of if someone comes in, they're developing, say, a hundred doors, that a certain percentage of that would have to fall within the affordable housing guideline?
I, I have no problems with that. I have no problems with that personally. You know, I know that's been done in other areas of the country. I've talked to, to Commissioner Hanson about that. Where he came from in San Diego, they've been doing that for years and years and years. Now, I don't want to be San Diego. I don't want to be anything close to California. But, you know, that's something that they have done previously. So, you know, or we come up with ideas where, you know, if somebody buys something that we allow them tax breaks, that they need to be in it for five years. They can't turn around and flip the house immediately, you know, some type of deed restriction. I'm just throwing out ideas. I'm not, I haven't thought it all through. I'm just throwing out some ideas that I've had.
So are you thinking the tax breaks or fee waiver type?
Something, something like that. But, but the developer needs to, to work with the city, in my opinion, to, to do it. I don't think, I don't think big multifamily complexes help. You know, I know we've built a ton of apartments out there on Telegraph. Apartments, in my opinion, don't lend itself to. When I think of affordable housing, I think of people being able to buy something and, and create wealth, you know, create homeownership as opposed to just rent. At renting it twelve or thirteen hundred dollars a month, you can't, you know, the people aren't being able to save. And they can't save money.
But there is a way to achieve affordable housing without going vertical.
I don't know. Well, lower land, yeah. A lot prices have to be less. And, you know, and that's, and that's the bottom line.
Thank you.
So Brian, what, what's your, what's your favorite thing you like about planning commission and the thing that, that frustrates you the most about planning?
The favorite thing I, I think is knowing what's going on in the city, for one. The thing that's frustrated me the most is having to do this virtually the last nine months. It's just irritated the crap out of me that, that we haven't been able to have public input the way I think we should have public input. I mean, I, I, I strong, I believe that people ought to be able to have the opportunity to stand at this mic and talk like I'm doing tonight. As opposed to sending us letters or whatever, whatever else they have to do. That's the biggest frustration. And, and that's the biggest frustration for everybody at this point in time, I know that.
Any additional questions for Brian?
Brian, I think, I feel like I know you a little bit because I've watched, I think, three planning commission members over the last couple of months. So I kind of know what, what you go through. And of course, I've served on a planning commission in years past, but we appreciate your dedication, your willingness to serve there. It's, it's an important place. It's helpful for the council. At least on my part, I've always felt like as, as long as we have a planning commission that's looked at the details, you know, our part shouldn't be that difficult in most cases.
I feel sometimes we send to you guys the stuff that's hard, you know, because some of the stuff is hard. And I think that's because of some of the rules of that we live by. You know, some of these little commercial pieces in town, I would love to see somebody bring us a proposal as opposed to just changing the zoning. You know, what do you want to put there? You know, okay, yeah, it's low impact. That's what, I mean, I would love to see that kind of proposals as opposed to, well, we need to zone change. And now, once we get the zone changed, well, we changed our minds, what we're going to build on. That to me is a hard person.
You know, that, that line of thought actually answered the question where I was going. So I'll just end maybe with this. Tell us a little about this. This is to kind of be introduced and we, we know you, but as an introduction, just tell us a little bit about you, about your family, about some of your other interests. Who is Brian Musso and what about your family?
We moved to St. George, the area back in 1994. So we lived in, we lived in Bloomington Hills for 20-plus years. We've been out here in the field town for about seven years. I started out, when we moved to St. George, I worked with my brother and he built park models. So, you know, I'm real familiar with, with Rio Virgin, with Winter Haven, with Harrisburg, all these places because I'm the one who built all the decks and all, and all those park models that are down in those, in those communities. So I did that with him for about four years, my degrees in finance. And we lived in Cleveland at the time and it was third week in January, we went to Chicago and it was freezing. We moved, came back and my brother had just moved here and he said, you might want to consider moving here. And by October, we were done. We had come to, to St. George. So I worked with him for four years and then after that, I became an appraiser with Morley and McCauley. I've done that for the last 27. I have four kids, two of them which live here in the area now. We had a COVID miracle that brought our kids from San Jose here. And so they live here now. I have a daughter that lives with me. I have a son that's getting ready to graduate from Harvard in the next three months and move to San Diego, not San Diego, but Newport.
It's not the soccer son?
Yeah, it's Wes. He's getting his MBA. So, I'm proud of my kids, obviously. They, they took their brains after their mother, not got their hard work maybe from you, but not their brains. So, and then my son Nick is up in Salt Lake. Hobbies, I don't have any. I, I looked the other day and I thought, you know what? I really don't do anything. I work a lot. And that's all I do. And that's, it seems like that's all I did all last year is, is work because we were in business. So I wish I could say I mountain biked, did something active. I don't, you know, I sit at my computer and I don't work.
So you did quote an appraised night that I plan on using. That's a COVID miracle.
COVID miracle. Yeah. Well, there's very few of them, but like I said, we had kids paying forty-two-hundred dollars a month in rent for a seventeen-hundred square foot three-bedroom, two-bath house with laundry in the garage and a single-car garage. And they came here thinking they were going to build and they haven't got around to it.
Just a little side note, Craig Morley, Stan McCauley, do you still see them at the office or?
Well, Stan, no. Stan retired probably 10 years ago when he went on his mission. And then he came back and did one more commercial appraisal and realized he didn't need to put up with that anymore. So and so we don't see Stan once every four or five months. Craig, I see every day.
Tell Craig hi.
Thank you, Brian, very much.
Anything else? Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate, appreciate the opportunity to be service to the community.
Mr. Green?
Come on up.
So, right off the bat.
Whatever you want.
Your email says 20th Maine. Is that, are you from up that way? Are you part of the 20th Maine?
Well, let's see, I talked about habits. 20th Maine is the Civil War Regiment.
Right.
I've been known to portray Joshua Lawrence Chamberlain in Gettysburg. I go there and do live presentations. And I've done a couple of History Channel.
They're not, we're not quite hearing you. If you, if you don't mind.
You're welcome.
They just have my shot. The 20th Maine, I'm sorry. Sorry. I'm a, this makes it been kind of interesting for me. So it's 20th Maine is a Civil War Regiment. I mentioned to you, I portray Joshua Lawrence Chamberlain. And I've done a few things for History Channel. So that's where the 20th Maine comes from because I've also done Civil War reenactments, actually go to Gettysburg and other places, Chamberlain. And most recently, I portrayed Chamberlain at 150th anniversary of Abraham Lincoln's funeral. And so we went there, stayed in Illinois and buried Abraham Lincoln again. So all the speeches, everything that took place in the original burial was there. And so including taking and interning his casket. So I was kind of in charge of helping out, making the move and bringing the casket into the original in the St. Catapult where it was stored. And so that was interesting. So that's how the 20th Maine gets there. That answers your question.
Well, tell us about yourself and why you'd be interested in, as you apply for the planning commission?
Well, it's, it's the, right now, it's, I work for the county. And actually, my resume indicates my old job. As of a week ago Friday, I have been hired to count by the county to help make the transition this new sports shooting park, which is, I think, all of you are familiar out there with the park, what's making their transition. So I've been hired as the new manager. Prior to that, I was the counterterrorism specialist for the five southern counties of Utah. And also I did See Something, Say Something program is one of the things that I was also working for the county. Prior to that, I had my own businesses. I also worked as a law enforcement desk officer for seven months out of Yellowstone. And prior to that, I had my own business, traveling internationally consultant. Worked on some projects, like I think I mentioned in my resume, it could be further here, but the embassy in Baghdad and also one of the tasks we had, I had to do work for 125 different facilities dealing with HUD, housing, housing, dealing with revamping nursery period as far as its organization. Actually met with many suppliers, all of them, and bombed. And had to help them transition into a new building. And, and so it goes on and on. So dealing with them, I had, we had some issues referenced to two presidents of the United States who promised that they would not have to go into new federal building. And nobody ever bothered to show them what they were doing in the new federal building. And so one of the sad notes was while I was showing new blueprints to them, two young ladies pointed hysterics because they thought it was the old building and they kept saying, I'm sitting right there. And had to sit down with them and brought some other people and then helped calm them down, just let them see that new building was not what they thought it was. The way design was, it kind of surprised me. And so we, I took them on a tour and, and so helped them acclimate into the idea that they were going, being told, even though they were told they wouldn't have to go into building, that they were going to go into a new building. So it also goes back. I've worked with military and State Department, a few other things in between. I've lived here for seven years. Like I, I was told we were moving here because I was in Afghanistan and my wife was looking at houses. She wanted to come up here because I've been up here working before in my other life. And so that's how I found out more about that we were going to move here. And when she was looking for homes and she was sending me pictures of homes, while I was home looking at pictures, when she told me, she said, well, we're going to be moving. And I said, we? So that's how I found out.
Did you kind of have a military haircut? It was just interesting to find out what, what century that was from.
Well, the century, no, if you saw me in Afghanistan, my hair was down to here and my beard was down to here. So, and I'll tell you, my nickname is Moses.
I'm, I'm Andy, it's of that handsome beard of yours, by the way. I think my color would be just about like yours if I could get that far.
It's platinum blonde.
Yeah, platinum blonde, there you go.
So in our, I love it here. I, I also volunteer. I volunteer at the airport, at the museum out there and you work in planes and you tours. Again, I like to volunteer, but this is my city now. So I want to give back as much as I can. And I believe that I have the background and also I, the infrastructure study I mentioned there with the five counties, very interesting. Understanding about the water, everything else, water and transportation and so forth, especially on the counterterrorism side of the issue. So it's taken me a lot of places. And my new job is taking me to a different world. Many because of what the transition is taking place and some of the issues that are popping up in that. And some of it's controversial. So it's, in fact, I'm meeting with the commission tomorrow, the board commission tomorrow for the first time and introducing myself there. So I hope that answers your question. I can go on.
Thank you. Thank you. Any additional questions for Mr. Green?
Thank you. So no technical questions right?
I have a question for you, Mr. Green.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for being here. So considering that you want to be a commission member, what would be a goal, maybe two or three goals that you would like to bring? That you would be able to bring in and bring about some positive or meaningful change if it's needed?
I don't know if we bring in the change. I think we do, if I understand the commission properly, it's a lot of advice and so. But I see that we're growing and I, I noticed it my last city I lived in. I was kind of involved in some of the politics and stuff. And I saw the city was going in kind of a direction that, yes, they needed money because we need, everybody needs money because it's tax-based and so forth. But they started bringing in a lot of warehouses and so to offset. And the promises of jobs, the promise we bring in warehouse and we'll have jobs, but the jobs And so what I would like to see, if we're going to bring in more infrastructure here, that the jobs come with. And of course, we know that there's not a lot of, what I've classified really high-paying jobs here. Also, we're going to have more influx of people when that border opens up. We have to have more housing. So and you have to look at the structure of where we want to go. And I would like to see, like I say, a better tax base. That way it doesn't offset the homeowners. And then also bringing more jobs in. I like to see the city grow in a good direction. What I'm seeing here is I know there's a lot of money being poured, especially towards the airport. So a lot more buildings will come in, things I've been watching. But the main thing for me is I want the city to go forward and not backwards. And to me, if, if I can do that, I'd be happy to help. I've not been a chance to get a lot of familiarity with what goes on in the city. I see everything on the first. Send it back to the state, so what I think is important. But mainly the infrastructure, you're more aware of it than I am.
Well, it does. It answers it very well. But just one follow-up thought. As a council member, I hear people say all the time, you know what? We have enough people here, we have enough water, anything. You just need to slam the door, let anyone else in. What would you say to people that would, that would recommend that we do that?
Well, I had a conversation with the government of Ross County. Ralph told me where, an area where I live, there's much water there to support eight thousand homes. Of course, that's what Ralph says. So also, we talked about the pipeline going in and there's also supposed to be a reservoir going in Warner Valley. So there's more money, more, more water coming in that direction here. And also, as I understand it, the county's got a little more focus of where they want to bring water in to, to the area. I believe there's water here, but again, it has to be ready. And so it, more people are going to come because we know that people leaving Californian droves are coming in. But the water is, is an issue, but it has to be planned. And I'm not been in a position to really see how that plan is going, just on the peripheral. When I go study, like Lake Powell, so. I know that we bring it in and I really do want to put a reservoir here and think another reservoir is going to go down. But what I know now may not be happening down the road. My, my privilege is I've, I've been able to listen to what goes on in the county. So I've been able to put that in, especially my reports about the estate and so forth. But I know water's a big issue here, but also the growth is something we have. But I know water's a big issue here, but also the growth is something we have to look at. And I've heard people say we need to slow it down and so forth. And it's kind of hard because homes are building pretty quickly now. Again, the water may be the issue, hopefully get water in this weekend. Supposed to be a storm coming. So, uh, I hope that answers your question. So I'm trying, so.
You did a great job. Very well, thank you.
Any additional questions? Mr. Green, thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
And thank you for your interest.
If you want to come out to the shooting park, come out.
So is Troy, Troy, Troy Bowler still working out there at the shooting park? Do you know Troy? He's invited me out as well. It's time that we probably ought to do that.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Mayfield.
Mr. Perry, council members, it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for the opportunity.
Just share with us your desire to serve and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Um, I am, uh,
I don't already know.
I'll make it short and brief. When you asked an older guy my age, daddy, it could go on for a long time. We call him Fogs for the old guys, so we got to be careful there. Um, I'm married for forty-eight years to a beautiful young lady named Debbie Mayfield. I've got four children and eight grandchildren and two great-grandchildren out of work. And, uh, so yeah, the age is there, but I'm, we got married at six, so it wasn't so bad. So I'm a lot younger than I really could predict. Um, born and raised in Southern California. I came up here fifteen years ago. I wanted to get out of California and glad that I did. Although I kept going back to teach in college for quite a bit. Career-wise, uh, mostly fire service, uh, thirty-two years up through the chief ranks. Um, and then I worked for the college for twenty-five years, teaching fire defense, master planning, defense study, risk analysis, fire officers, and in my favorite course in the academy. I owned, uh, uh, a, uh, property management business up when I was, been here, I've been a realtor up here. And I've got, um, right now currently I have a detox center and rehab in, in Hurricane. My son and I and my wi, our wives all partners on that, so it's very rewarding. Um, I love being here, moved up again, you know, fifteen years ago and happy, happy to be here. Enjoy the company, enjoy the people and, and, uh, hobby-wise for me, I heard you ask some about the hobbies. I love sports, can-am riding, outdoor stuff, anything that's a little bit of fun out in that area, so. And my experience with, as, as I grew up in fire service and other things, uh, I was able to work with RDA as a work with the council, was able to work with, with, uh, the planning commission, uh, for all the things that we did in those ranks and through work in my career there as well. Uh, why I want to be in the planning mission? I, uh, I would really enjoy that. I enjoy working in the community. Yeah, as you can see, my career was there, but I really enjoy working in the community and with the community and being advisory to, to the mayor and to the council here. And hopefully not become California, if at all possible. So be able to offer some suggestions and, um, hopefully a little bit of experience. I'm also electrical contractors. I've done a lot of construction works. I have a little bit of background there as well. So that was, that's why I wanted to be part of it, to see it grow and, and to watch us grow with a good plan and help evaluate the plan and make sure the plan's working, give advice back to you guys. Make sure that we're going to, uh, uh, grow in a right, we're going to grow because it's a beautiful state and I mean, I mean, city. I made the mistake of telling all my friends, they've all moved up here. So, um, and they love it here. Uh, so I, I want to be on that so I can offer those, um, my experience I may have there and, and some opportunities to help the city grow i- in a good way.
We have a, you, you kind of touched on some of the questions that I had, but sure, thanks for being here. It's good to finally meet you. I've heard your name several times over the years.
A lot, huh?
But I want to ask you about something that I call the triangle of service. It has to do with ability, time and desire. So if you could just touch on those things, ability, the time and the desire.
Okay. Ability-wise is for, for me is that I think all the experience I've had within the fire service, construction, construction, planning, I teach fire defense, I teach master planning. So I have an idea of what risk assessments are and the things that you should be looking for, uh, or that we need to consider. So I hope bring that experience. I've got an education, I've got three AS degrees and a couple of bachelors and masters, those kind of things. They all have helped, it's a good toolbox to, to be able to draw from. So ability-wise, that's great. Time-wise, I'm fully retired, retired from the college, actually three times, but just retired from college. Uh, not going down to California to teach anymore. And my son runs the detox center. And I am just trees a bird and I've never been to it and golfing when I can. Uh, so you said time, abilities and the, and the reason I want to be there. Desire. Um, I, I like the involvement of the community that I live in. I, I love the involvement. I've gotten to know a lot of the people here, even ran for council one time, didn't quite make it. But just because I enjoy the, I enjoy being part of the community. And as I'd be able to help with the experience and I can offer those things, maybe I can save. Now, like I say, the older we get, the older my dad gets, the smarter he is. Uh, the older I get, the smarter he is. So I hope you'll offer some, uh, some experience and hope maybe not make some of the mistakes I've seen in other places. We need good, we need good, we're going to grow, so let's get, get the tax base we need. I've seen cities fall. I just did a study here about two years ago and a city that just didn't have any tax base and it went bankrupt.
What courses did you teach at the university?
I'm sorry?
What courses did you teach?
I teach leadership, management, fire defense, master planning, uh, emergency medical services, needs assessment, planning. Uh, and then I teach fire officer, chief officer classes on how to run large incidents. I ran a type one, two team that doesn't need you, but to run large, big incidents. And then I teach fire academy. Thank you. And I talk fast.
Let, helps you get things done.
Things quickly.
Yeah, talk fast to get things done.
Right, it's good to talk fast and get it done. Especially in the meetings that we have. Sometimes they go super late into the night and planning commission can as well. What, I mean, it sounds like you're committed as far as time, which is good. Um, what's your thoughts on, sometimes you have to, you got angry neighbors talking to you. Have you had experience in that of, of kind of room? Can you give us a quick little explanation of if you ever dealt with that kind of scenario with angry neighbors and making tough decisions?
Certainly have, you know, as a chief officer, you get complaints and, and then we're building fire stations. People don't want them next to you and I've dealt with that and I've dealt with, everyone has an opinion. Thank goodness we can still express that opinion for a little longer, I hope. And so, yeah, uh, but what I, the way I take a look at that is I, I, I evaluate it all, see what's best in, in my opinion, where it can best benefit the most and still meet the objectives, very objective-driven, um, of what we're trying to achieve. And then, you know, good talking with them and meeting with them and, and getting them to understand, educating them. That, that usually is the best thing you can do as much as you can. And understand that not everybody's going to be pleased, but if you do it right and involve them, most people will, will come around or they'll at least listen to your argument, especially if you show them that you care. You know, you're not just being a tyrant. And if you care, they'll, they'll, they'll care back usually.
Thank you. Any additional questions for them? Well, it's good to see you.
That was pretty quick, you know? Again, thank you for the opportunity. I'd love to be able to serve with you.
Thank you. Did you hear about Denise from, um, the, from Monica?
We've been playing phone tag since last Friday. So, and I tried her again today and still no response, so. She was the last one, finally. Yeah.
Thank you. So any thoughts from council this, John, sure, would you like to go into a closed session? And complete this tonight or would you want?
I'm, I'm ready to go into a closed session if you guys are.
Yeah.
I, I really appreciate the opportunity to meet all these people. I enjoy the conversation and makes me feel really comfortable looking at these people.
Okay. Okay, all entertain a motion that we adjourn to a closed session.
So move.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So who's the new mayor in South Georgia?
Michelle Randall, four to one.
That's what I predicted.
Are you saying you look good in a mask?
Black and my Q-tip. Okay, thank you. We are back at our electronic special meeting. On item four, commission appointment consideration to confirm the appointment of members to the planning commission. I would like to recommend to the council that we ask Corey Anderson to serve on the planning commission And Brian Uso to continue to serve another term on the county commission. Pete Bullock would take the place of Jason Smith. We've already asked Jason Hanson to serve as the board chair, commission chair. And we would ask that people what to serve as an alternate on the planning commission. Does that cover everything?
Could I clarify one thing, the mayor, that Corey Anderson would be for about a year and a half to take account?
Whatever role Monty Holly, whatever. All entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make that motion that we approve the planning commission members that have stated Corey Anderson, Peter Bullock, and Brian Uso.
Can I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Councilman Bundy, second.
And roll call vote.
Staley, I.
Ward, I.
Ivy, I.
Bundy, I.
And thank you, and thank you, council. Appreciate your input very, very much. And then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.